I'd like to call to order the work session of the Morrisville Town Council, May 30th, 2019, 6:30 PM. We're going to do a work session with a couple of items. The first item is related to the fiscal year 2020 Annual Operating Budget and Capital Investment Program. I'm going to pass the mic to Jeannie Hooks, Assistant to the Town Manager, to facilitate our discussion. Thank you, Ms. Hooks.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So, May 30th, this is our date of trying to reconcile and you finalizing some discussion and direction for council. So what I have placed in front of you, Martha, the Town Manager, and I've worked on, are some outstanding questions or items that you needed information on that relate to capital projects and some suggested, proposed ordinances, and we'll go through each one of them. But we'll start with really what were some of the two outstanding capital items that you wanted to discuss. So we have Airport Boulevard Extension Phase One, some factual information, and then we also have Crabtree Nature Park information. So Martha, you want to take over from here?
So, we acknowledge you haven't gotten this before because we were working on it throughout yesterday and today. So I'm going to try to summarize and then hopefully answer any of your questions. So we heard some desire to incorporate some projects related to NC-4 congestion mitigation, and then we specifically talked about the Airport Boulevard project. Associated with that discussion was LAP funding, certainty of LAP funding, some very specific information about the Airport Boulevard project. So that's what we provided here for you. We've described the segment, which we talked about a little bit at the last meeting, which is really NC-54 into Town Hall Drive. No, it's not. Yes, it is. That's correct. It's really a short segment, but it's seen as a precursor to the flyover at Airport Boulevard. The project itself has been submitted for LAP funding twice in the past by NC DOT, and while it scored well, it didn't really score well enough. So we worked with Ben to evaluate our options for funding. There's a couple of options to consider, and then there's one that he's recommended, which is expediting funding for design of a project. Hi there! So that we could potentially apply for LAP funding in fiscal year 20, which is this coming September. The reason for suggesting that is because if it wasn't successful, we'd have another bite at that apple in '21. The design, Ben would suggest expediting that design so that, in fact, he even suggested before the budget to get that process started. A million dollars, which is what we've incorporated into a CIP worksheet that we're going to talk about in a little bit, would front that design. That would be our cost. It would not become reimbursable out of LAP, so we would know we're a million in at that point. It could potentially cover some right away, but we won't know that until the design. Ben has indicated it really is probably a simple design, and then he further suggests that we increase the town match to enhance the points. And he and Jeannie talked at length about the points process, but 20% is required. The recommendation is 40% to maximize the points on that project. And then what that would really approximate with what our current cost estimate is, which is an estimate, would be, it'd probably be about a 50-50 project cost split between the town and funds that would be awarded through LAP. There's some information about here about when the timing of that project. There's actually a chart in here that shows you the two scenarios for the timing of the project. Ben also feels that if we pursued this project, that NC DOT would probably favorably look upon supporting the project through expediting it and construction managing, which in the long run saves us time and money from not having to incur those expenses. So we have incorporated for your consideration into a revised CIP, which we'll talk about in a minute, a million dollars in fiscal year 20, so actually funding the project. It's out of the roadway reserve, and that would still leave us a half a million, a half a million dollars in that reserve. We would have to be prepared to expend an additional 2.3, and that would get us about $3.6 million in LAP funding. And we've incorporated that into planning years. And when we get to that chart, as we do with every project we're proposing, we're suggesting how the resources could be put towards this project.
Councilmember Garamella?
Martha, I just wanted to make sure this Airport Boulevard Extension Phase One is only the flat road, not the flyover. I just wanted to be...
You are 100% accurate.
Because that's, we want to be very cognizant that the 2.3 is not getting us a bridge.
Is actually .77 miles is what it is.
No, I just, yeah, so that, you know, it's only making that, and then still we are depending on the DOT to build a flyover.
And let me be clear, I did misspeak. It's Church Street to Garden Square. So I just want to make that clear.
So you referenced talking to Ben a lot. Did you just talk to him today and yesterday, these last two days? Okay, so you, you, yeah. I appreciate, because he's my favorite person on road projects, so...
This project became heightened through our comprehensive transportation plan process. So Ben had submitted it as a new CIP profile concept, which is how this and the Town Hall Extension got added to the CIP. It was a direct output out of the comprehensive transportation plan. So some of the work was already done, and we just verified and clarified some of the information based on Town Council's discussion on Tuesday to gather that. He is pretty confident about this project. None of us can guarantee the project, but that, I think, that is why he's recommended two bites of an apple would be, then the design would not be lost because we would have two cycles that could occur. One of the things that staff would tell you about this one, and perhaps some other questions that might get raised, is we're aware behind the scenes that we're still balancing and managing in a good way, good positive way, lots of traffic construction mitigation projects going on at the same time. And so we're aware of that timing. We don't have some of those answers for you, but also remember that the money becomes available. We still have some flexibility and fluidity as to when we start the timing of when the money gets expended.
I think it's fair to say that Ben's, as soon as he heard that you might be committed to leveraging dollars now and potentially leveraging a higher match, if that's your interest, that's when he said, now we have some skin in the game, so.
So then let me, did you, because this project has scored high but has not reached the funding level, is he convinced that it will never reach the funding level without our push and our help, similar to what we did on Morrisville Carpenter? That's my biggest concern and question.
So I'll answer your question this way, is when Ben put it forth as a CIP project concept, so several months ago, it was that far back that he recommended 40% funding to enhance the scoring. So the confidence, even with months of knowing what's going on, he also did mention this to us, the training for LAP projects is coming up. It will be his first insights as to who might also be bringing projects forward.
There's opportunity here to, for, to go down a couple of paths. Okay, all right, that's...
Mayor Protem, Scotty Johnson.
Sorry, the microphone just gave me a little bit of difficulty. So I actually feel that this project is worthy, and I'm in support of investing our money into this, a million dollars for the next cycle, because I believe that it will help access through 54 as well as through our town now. It appears through this conceptual diagram that I'm looking at that it would be a four-lane road or would it be a two-lane road. Currently, the stub from Cary is four, and we don't have a stub, and, you know, Airport Boulevard on the other side of the railroad tracks is three. So that flyover will obviously redesign that whole thing, but it's important to the neighborhoods as well as the schools if we know if we're going for a two or a three or a four.
So I'm looking at what Ben submitted for the capital project. Says the CTP identifies the cross-section as a four-lane divided road, a 10-foot side path, five-foot sidewalk.
So it would have a median or would it have a turn lane? Do we, can we tell from that? Divided. Divided as median?
For the median.
Okay. So that actually has capacity, like Morrisville Carpenter Road will have in the future, for that heavier level of traffic, and it might lessen the need to have a flyover at Morrisville Carpenter Road. So for that reason, I'm in support of it. I think we need to, we don't know it, but it would lessen the risk. And with the Pew House and our downtown plans, I just, I'm more in favor of this project with a flyover than Morrisville Carpenter Road.
I also like from the diagram that where the construction will be doesn't as much impact a lot around, hopefully the Town Hall Drive intersection, we can minimize the time there, but everything else is kind of in the background and not on existing roadway. So hopefully it won't add to the congestion issues and the orange cones that we have anywhere else. Did anyone else want to weigh in on this one? Seems like Councilmembers Link?
I'd like to thank staff. I'm in favor of this, and so I appreciate the hard work, Benjamin's work, and that was helpful in the lead-up to this, the narrative that was put in there, I think in our last notes, page 17 whatever.
Councilmember Johnson?
Just one more comment. You know, this isn't, like I said the other night, this is an important roadway connection, and I feel more comfortable tonight with what you've given us and the information you've shared, knowing that we're going to run down every avenue we can to save our taxpayers' money at the same time moving the project forward. That's all I ask for as we move forward. And I know that goes without saying, because Benjamin's very good about making sure he runs down every avenue to make sure he gets matching funds or funding for our projects, but that is important to me.
So, Mayor, if I could, again, I'm being presumptive, but assuming council would adopt a budget that includes this project, may I also assume that we could start the process to expedite, as Ben mentions, before July 1? There's not an expenditure of money, but it would allow us to start putting some things in place as quickly as possible to secure contracts, et cetera.
Okay, I'm looking for head nods. Everyone seems supportive of that, so thank you very much for following up on that. And, oh, Liz, one more?
I just have one more question. So remind me, I think I already know the answer, but I need to ask, so remind me, this, adding this funding line now does not take away from any other project or anything else we had in the budget?
This is an add, but the next one we're going to talk about is a modification.
What I'm getting at is there was, we were not funding anything else through the Transportation Reserve Fund. We're not bumping anything else out.
We're not bumping anything else out, no.
That's right. Thank you.
Yeah, instead of 1,500, undesignated in that roadway fund, we're going to have only 1,500 left instead of 1,505,000. So that's a great question to make sure that we're not stealing from Peter Pay Paul. Okay, so next item?
So worked with Jerry, very similar to Ben to gather some more information on Crabtree Creek Nature Park, which we've provided in something you haven't been able to read yet. But this, we were copying, we were copying for you. So this project concept in different forms and fashions has existed since 2002. The, and you have, we did provide you with a concept sketch of what it looked like in its original form that was heavy intensive uses, and there's a variety of reasons why there's been modifications, including input from the community nearby this project. As we went through the Parks and Rec Master Plan, it was one of the priorities that was identified by the community survey, nature park, passive park. The concept plan was updated in conjunction with the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and we provided that with you just again for frame of reference. And it took into account the topological and environmental and floodplain issues, along with the desire to be less intrusive on some of the neighbors. So you see the picture is some hiking trails. It enhances our connectivity to the greenways. It has some of the educational and nature things, and one of the additional components was ADA accessible equipment. That was something that council was pleased about as a part of the Parks and Rec Master Plan process, and sort of still maintaining a lower usage of the park, but providing some educational opportunities. One of the other things that got mentioned at the time of the survey was servicing that side of, that area of town where there are not park amenities, and that residential community starting to grow on that side of the area. We've also, again, described this project very similarly to what we did. Just a reminder that the cost estimate is, I hate to use the word inflated, but it's a guesstimate number at this point with significant amounts of contingency because we don't know. So one of the things that we talked to Jerry about today is that there are still options that exist for this, including scalability. This is 39 acres, of which it could be scaled for something to use and maximize the full, but could be scaled down. There are ways to potentially consider access also from Cedar Fork District Park to minimize access off of Key Bidge Dive and impacts to a neighborhood. There could be options to explore partnership opportunities with some of the businesses and shopping centers there for parking. We don't know any of that until we evaluate this project. So a revised option for your consideration, and what we've programmed into the CIP spreadsheet for you to review tonight, is reducing the request for $1.225 million in fiscal year 20 to $500,000. That would allow design work in order to look at various scaled options and get those more precise cost estimates. It leaves the remainder of that money available back for you in your PIL for fiscal year 20. And then we've also proposed spreading out the project into three years rather than two. And there's debt ratio, things related to the decision on Airport Boulevard to do that. But that gives you more time to consider and allows money to remain in your PIL to be considered for other purposes. So we're happy to answer any questions, discuss further. Jerry's here if you have any specific questions from your subject matter expert. We did provide the survey, which you've seen when you looked at the Parks and Rec Master Plan, but you have it again, as well as what's really there right now out of the Parks and Rec Master Plan inventory that was done about a year ago.
And just a reminder, you control the process. So all we're asking for is the 500 now to get something started, but you control the next iteration of appropriation. You control what level of design you wish to go to. All of that's within your purview to manage.
I was thinking when we met on Tuesday that deferring this for a full year is the way to go to give transparency, that this is not something that might happen right away because of all the other needs, but I think staff has come back with something that's really, a really great balance, that we keep momentum forward, and then we have lots of different options for this park with the knowledge that it might not be the whole thing that we're seeing, but it might be more, it might be different. 39 acres is a huge swath. And I just have a quick question. There's a middle part that's labeled wetland. Is that the only area that's not really well-developable? Because I got a chance to walk around there yesterday, and the existing field is raised up, but everything else is like a couple of feet down. So I think that's the real challenging nature of this. Is that the assessment?
So much of the site has development restrictions on it, so there's only a portion that can be utilized for certain types of structures. And Jerry is here if we need to reach out.
I'm getting down in the weeds a little bit, but I think this is a great potential site.
Yeah, I think our emphasis is there is flexibility in the scalability of this that we just don't know till we invest some funds into the project.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So this is a project that I did want to see move forward, so I appreciate the compromise. The 500,000, though, is that still, are you still anticipating design work?
So, and I've mentioned this before, but I'll sort of reiterate again, is when we tried to spread out projects, we took that estimate, adjusted for some additional contingency. There's construction management costs for many of these projects. One of the things that, you know, we try to learn from, I hate to say past mistakes, Councilmember Schlink, but learning from our experiences and what we have often presented to council was construction costs, not total project costs. So some of that contingency is to recognize there are the construction management and all these other costs associated with putting a project on the ground. To spread out the money, I did, and to be consistent, I sort of did an artificial 25% of that project cost, and that's where the 1.225 came from. We never expected the design to be all of that. So one of the other things that Jerry did share with us yesterday was the cost of the design, and I'll say the environmental work, for four of his projects, MAFC, Northwest Park, RTP Park, and Crabtree Hatcher Creek Greenway. And they're in the 300,000 to 500,000 range for those various projects. So that's where we sort of suggested 500,000 could cover us irrespective of what council directed as the scope of that project.
Okay, so that would, that would get us in fiscal year 20 to a point where we would have a better idea of cost estimates if we chose to put this for a bond referendum in 2020.
We believe so, and that's our goal.
That would be, I'm with you on that goal. I think the public would be with you on that goal, with all of us on that goal. So I want to make sure that we're still moving forward and that we're not delaying this in any way.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Anyone else have any other thoughts on this item? Councilmember Garamella, and then Mayor Protem, please.
I think this is a step in the right direction, because when I saw the 1.22, that's when I kind of asked how those cost estimates were coming. But one thing I wanted to ask is, we are looking for 100,000, and then it's all kind of scoped out. Till we complete, you know, the outcome of that, we will not go to the next step, because that's what I would like to know in this fiscal year 2020, 20 and '21, the work will be done, because we can allocate all that we want, but if the work is not going, it's not automatically getting deposited. That's, I wanted to make sure, that's...
So I want to, you want to make sure the design is complete in a year?
Yes.
And I'll reiterate something that Jeannie's already said. You control whether this process moves forward once you have a design to look at. And in fact, this is the kind of project that you'd get some periodic updates. You wouldn't see a final design. We need your input as this would be developed.
Perfect. That's all. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yep, thank you. I do support the funding allocation of 500,000 in fiscal year 2020 from the parkland payment lieu. I think there is a real need to move this forward, and I do want to know what the potential costs are in less of a, you know, guesstimate, more defined. We might phase this project, we might not. We might program it immediately after finding out that, you know, of the options, we potentially could get grants for some of the features in the parks, such as a greenway feature or an ADA feature. There's other funding sources besides the town for this. This is not like a local road project. This is, parks sometimes have additional sources. So I'm hopeful that as we have more information and can clarify and articulate what we're building, we can also get public feedback on that design once it's available for review. Thank you. We used to have a lot of grants for our greenways, so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do that in the future.
Councilmember Schlink, please.
I'm in favor of the allocation. Thank you for your work.
So I'm going to have Jeannie. Thank you. We have some other things to talk about with the CIP to clarify some of the other things council talked about, just in particular fire stations, but I'd like you to hold those questions, so Jeannie can actually go through numbers that really affect our fiscal year 20 operating budget first, since that's the next thing in our packet. We're just going to sort of show you where this fit into the mix.
So this is my worksheet behind the scenes in the long-range model that feeds the budget report document. This is your comprehensive look. So let me just walk you through the changes, and I want to point out the changes to accommodate some of your requests council-wide are noted in red. So the projects we've talked about, how did we put them into the five-year plan? So the first one you'll notice is Crabtree Nature Park right away, we mentioned, that we're asking for in the capital budget, 500,000 to begin that design work. And we've spread the cost across the next two years, fiscal year '21 and '22. The 500K and the 725K, the allocation source would be parkland payment and lieu. When it comes to true construction cost, whatever that turns out to be, according to our assumptions and our estimates with long-range forecasting, worst-case scenario, potentially 3.7 million, that would be a potential bond item. So that falls down in a bond source. Okay? Are you with me so far? Okay. So the next item, let's talk about public safety. We had conversations around fire stations. So we have done something to accommodate your interest in generalizing the project fund that would be created. It would be created for public safety improvements. And in that, it calls out that the capital investment plan suggests to address fire station two relocation. We've... We've added that cost is to be determined. Remember, we have to work with NC DOT. What are we going to receive as a result of the taking? And then do cost estimates of where that could be relocated. So there's a lot of due diligence that needs to occur with that project. But to satisfy your interest, that's been incorporated in the capital budget for that, establishing that capital project. We have, of course, Northwest Fire Station that's included. We have left the 300,000 for beginning the feasibility or study for the land that we currently own. Park West Fire Station is also included. Again, that was related to information resulting from your study indicated need, and that is also a part of it. So that is taking that money and bucketing it in a capital project that can meet generally public safety needs, either or, for Fire Station Two, Northwest Park, and/or Park West, depending on further due diligence and evaluation. And the capital project budget is establishing 300,000 plus 2.5 million. Any questions so far?
And we're going to show you both the resolution that quantifies some of the ideals council was talking about and the modifications to the capital budget ordinance in just a few minutes.
So the funding source for the two costs?
Yeah, but you're also indicating this could be a bond project, too. Is that?
So the funding source for the initial funding in '20 would be from your reserves. Okay? Other costs associated in the out-years will relate to construction and will ultimately be bond debt load, potentially, if you choose that to be a part of the package. So the next one was, as we spoke about Airport Boulevard, but we've decided to call that NC 54 corridor congestion mitigation and put together sub-projects, which is Airport Boulevard, Extension Phase One, and the potential for any future identified projects that are to be determined. Again, the capital project will be established, saying that it's NC 54 corridor congestion mitigation. But within that capital project fund source, our first attention will be for Airport Boulevard, which would be the appropriation of 1 million from your road and transportation reserves. And in the out-years, again, this is another one that could potentially be, you could use debt for this particular source. Or, sorry, this one is actually lap-funded, no debt associated with it, for Airport Boulevard. So it is 100% funded between your reserve and your potential to acquire lap funding. So there's no debt associated with that one. Sorry. Any questions on this one?
One has a potential to be some kind of a bond question, too. Okay.
I meant, just my two cents. We have 1.5 million in the transportation, so if it is three years from now, you're getting the 1.5 more anyway. So it's accruing every year 500,000 or 495, right? The one cent tax. So it's automatically getting into that bucket, that we can use it, and it doesn't need to be a bond.
But I do believe that if we do a transportation-related bond, it would be loose and general enough that we would be able to use this and incorporate it in order to not use up all of that reserve, in case you want to use that for intersection improvements. So it's all the same type of money. I think you're agreeing.
I think we are agreeing, Satish. I think, and these are still to be determined, you know, I'm just, I'm just want to keep all our options open. I'm just making sure our options are open at this point.
Okay. And then the other item at the bottom here is your future priorities. These are project scopes that are in development. But these are the things that we heard were important to you, and you felt you needed to be listed on your CIP, but work to be done. Affordable housing, greenway improvements, land acquisition. And land acquisition could be more than just parks. This could be other things for other facilities. Transit-oriented development in Town Center. Again, these are scopes in development. There needs to be more, for example, more conversation around your vision with Town Center in order for us to be able to properly produce project scopes and develop some general project cost estimates. So we've listed them as to be determined. Okay? Any questions on this section?
I have a question. Since we are allocating only 500,000 for the Crabtree Nature Park, and we have money allocated in the Parkland Payment in Lou, can that money be allocated for a subsection of land acquisition as a park acquisition, so that we can use it under?
The answer's yes, but up in the Parks and Recreation Area, if you would look at the item called Future Town Park Sites, one of the things we talked about in a, excuse me, previous CIP discussion is, this was a project that was, it's on this next page, I think. It was identified as something else, and we left it in and sort of repurposed it to recognize that one of the goals of the master plan indicates we need more parkland. And again, that's not identified by council yet, big parcels, little parcels, where they're at. And that's really going to relate to some of the policy statement we've tried to put into a resolution for you. But it's there. If you're asking about allocating money in '20 to start that process, I'd offer two things. One, that's a council discussion to have, but very similarly to where we've brought you opportunities, as we're aware of them, you can make those decisions incrementally as those opportunities become available.
No, you are 100% correct. The reason, when I saw the land acquisition, so if we can go the last two years, how much we allocate? Like, we didn't allocate. That's correct. We got it, you know, when the opportunity came. So that would be a good, like, kind of ballpark that it would be transparent to see for our citizens that we were committed to, whenever the opportunity comes, we were getting the properties. And could be parks, like extensions, or, you know, right-of-way acquisitions and all kinds of things.
So that sounds something that we're glad that Kathy Jarboe is here, and she can incorporate that in our overall vision and messaging. But are you okay just leaving it as is? Okay. Thank you, sir. Good point. Okay, next.
So I want to point you at the bottom and just walk you through debt obligation before we leave this particular page. How did this picture change, and how did it impact our debt? Remember that currently, the CIP is projecting Airport Boulevard or the project, sub-project for the NC 54 corridor congestion mitigation is projecting it as a funded reserve lap project, just like Morrisville Carpenter Road, for the most part. There is a small portion of installment debt. There was no impact from that project adding it in this way to debt. The debt impact came from when we shifted the Crabtree Creek Nature Park from fiscal year 21 debt to fiscal year 22. So the impact is that it lessened the new debt or addition of new debt. You'll see the 410. It lowered it and cut it in half, basically, because I believe before it was 820 or 840. And then your out-years are relatively the same. How did it impact your debt service ratio? It dropped fiscal year 21 by a point, if I remember correctly. But the out-years remained relatively unchanged. That's the only real shift or impact when we talk about debt obligation and how we're proposing to fund your CIP items that are related to debt.
Okay. Any questions or comments on what Ms. Hooks just went over? Councilmember Richlink?
So your chart at the bottom says total debt, and you list, thank you for doing this. So next year, you anticipate, I mean, it can all change, but one cent? And then is it cumulative? So that would add it to four cents, and then four cents, and four cents?
Correct. So as you add new projects, you acquire more debt, you accumulate more over that period of time, because they're 20-year terms.
Thirteen, no.
What is his name?
He's saying you add all of the years that you go across.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm, I misunderstood that.
And I also want to be clear, we're not telling you you have to raise the tax rate. That's, again, a continued discussion. There's a whole bunch of factors. What we're trying to do is just relatively tell you what the current value is.
If you continue to follow the plan, that's all. So back to, what is it? Maybe one cent, and then four cents, and then total five? The next four, if you don't carry over, or it'll only be three? Four minus one?
So let me try this retake on this one.
How about the maximum impact of all of the projects in these planning years is four cents?
Over the next three years, or four years?
Yeah, with this plan, it wouldn't, if you did everything we said exactly the way we said at the exact dollar, it would be four cents, if that's the way you chose to go. Period.
Okay. I think you just need to clarify that in the future, that how much, I mean, so we know, I mean, you know, where our definition is for two cents.
So your top bar, the orange bar, that is your policy? And that's what we're measuring, too? Your debt service ratio as a percentage of expenditures, and then your current debt. So your current debt is what we know and what we've approved. So that, and they, in fact, in the chart?
Year.
The numbers at the top are your current debt load per year. That's why I said I'm adding up and adding new debt each year as we add on new projects. That's why that probably was misunderstood. So the gray line is within our policy and is in our existing debt. When you propose new CIP debt, the projects within the four-year picture that accumulate to four cents over the five years in terms of tax rate equivalent to pay for that debt, then it jumps your debt service obligation as measured per year up to a maximum of 14. And this is a, this is an aggressive estimate, meaning I'm trying to be conservative and show worst-case scenario. Does that make sense? So 14 is your highest or the closest in which you get in 2022 for the projects that are shown in your CIP five-year plan that we are proposing debt for.
I want to circle back to Councilmember Schlink's comment. We can make that clarification for this year's final budget document. There's a couple other editorial things we need to correct, but we can, we can make sure that there's a clarification note in this budget adopted document.
Okay, that's helpful.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to head into reviewing the resolutions and ordinances that you would see on June 11th. We've sort of given you some red-line copies, because if you've reviewed what's been in the document, we've changed some of that. So we've tried to highlight that. So I'm going to pass it back to Jeannie.
Okay, so this is your capital investment budget ordinance, which is 2019-100B. So let's make sure everybody's on that particular document. Okay. This should be your next page. So I've shifted this around a little bit to put all the projects at the end. I did have the sections broken up a little bit. Generally, I have, the basic language is relatively the same for the sections one through 11. Turn to the meat and potatoes of what the changes were. Town center project item that relates to the stormwater, regional stormwater control is the same. That's unchanged. The item that has been changed, where we tried to generalize the scope, is the Public Safety Improvement Capital Project Fund. This is where we are creating that bucket in one capital project that you can manage and control where these resources work, what they restore, resources work towards first as we go through and gather additional information. So as we have changed it, we have said to establish a capital project for the purposes of funding professional services, land acquisition, design cost, feasibility studies, and/or relocation cost associated with future fire station facility locations and improvements. That's the generalization. Projects outlined by CIP identify Fire Station Two, Northwest, and Park West, including emergency traffic preemption, technology to address public safety improvements. Staff will provide counsel with an action plan prior to initiating expenditure activities for the Public Safety Improvements Capital Project Fund. So that's to define and change scope. The costs remain the same.
Does this language, is it very restrictive to Fire Station Two, Northwest, and Park West? Can we say to include but not? Just to give us a little wiggle room there in case we identify a different site? Is that necessary, or is this general enough?
So the money goes into the project, and council controls, and could edit that if they chose to. I would tell you, the public safety projects that are identified are these three at this point. But again, Jeannie's mentioned, the action plan comes back to you, and if there were modifications that needed to be done, they could be done. The standard for doing that remains at your control. I don't have authorities to move money in and out of capital projects that I've got some flexibility with an operation budget to take care of daily needs. So that's, it's purposefully restrictive. What could we do as this is outlined? Well, we could explore. Just as I mentioned, we have some ability to look at our current Fire Station Two location site, and we should do that to be prepared for our future discussions with NC DOT. We would be able to explore land availability or what might fit on parcels of land internally that we would be able to come back and give you some data in a closed session to consider. Some of, we're collecting some data. Chief Krittl, I think, would love to have six months of data that shows what the impact of our 911, but we could do 90 days. He's going to have some pictures. He's pulling some of that other data. So we can work on this without spending money, I think, is what I'm indicating. And as we get more defined with NC DOT on a timing, then we'll know where the flexibility is within that money. So we're not saying, we're not doing anything, we're just not spending money till we bring back that action plan to you.
All good as is? Okay. Seems like we can move on to the next item.
Okay, the next item is your Parks and Greenways Improvement Capital Project Fund. Again, another bucket-type fund. It's doing many things in here, but part of this change came from our decision to shift out Crabtree Nature Park. So we reduced the appropriation in fiscal year 20 by 720,000, where it was 1.2. Now it's down to 500. So I've reflected the change here and what we're appropriating from Parkland Payment in Lou. So it's been reduced by that amount. So we reduced it by 725,000. But we're doing other projects, yes.
It's, it's a connector to Indian Creek behind the villages? Behind, so there's a, a little connector segment to Indian Creek Greenway that we're, it's partially there. It's just another connectivity for our greenway. 275,000 of that number. So almost a million of it is those two projects.
Question on that, sorry, and Jerry can probably answer it. This, this, this greenway we're talking about, that doesn't cross over airport, the future airport connection, does it? Okay.
Okay, the next item, let me pull it up. So the next item is addressing our NC 54 corridor congestion mitigation capital project fund. This is your other bucket item. So the scope says to establish the capital project for the purposes of easing traffic congestion and enhancing roadway connectivity through the NC 54 corridor area by design, easement acquisition, and/or construction of transportation improvements, betterments, and other expansion needs. The projects are outlined by the CIP, identify Airport Boulevard and other future projects. Here's where we appropriate the million dollar to that bucket, and you can control the scope and additional appropriations in the future as we bring information forward.
I'll take the next one. So the resolution that's been drafted espouses some of the ideals and aspirations we talked about the last time. And a lot of the first wherethes are actually pulled directly out of the same item you approved last year. It's just what a CIP is, how it works. And then I want to get down to really the fact that, based on our conversation tonight, the total amount of the projects that are included in the capital budget ordinance that we just went over is 5,275,000. That, that's the actual funding appropriation you're going to do associated with the fiscal year 2020 project. And then that you have affirmed and committed to some of the ideals, which you've already seen, is you've got these future priority needs. We want to pay attention to NC 54 projects. And so we've, we've very clearly identified in the public safety improvements that Fire Station Two is a priority. It's been listed as a high priority along with the other, and that we're going to sort of take those in a comprehensive plan of action rather than an individual fire station plan. The item B is, is the identification of that category of project called NC Corridor Congestion Mitigation, and that we've identified the first project, but that there could be others. And some of that is going to come out of some of the prioritization and discussion of those things that you've looked at more recently in the comprehensive transportation plan, but also in our collaborative conversations with the Town of Cary and in NC DOT and other Campo identified projects, that, that that's of value that the town council wants to express to the public. And then the third one is the future priorities. And this is where your work, this, this is your work plan for the next year, is policy guidance and direction on what you want those to be. So staff will be working to help facilitate, council have those conversations so that you can translate that into numbers and plans in your future CIP budgets. But this is, this is the values that you've indicated to us as a part of the CIP discussion that we're trying to demonstrate to the public and is very obvious to them where you've established your conversation and priorities for this year.
So just to confirm that what you're going over, like the second to last whereas, that's kind of a red line, and all the last A, B, and C, they're kind of changed from what was in original packets, but otherwise it's pretty much the same.
Yeah, I call, I call this, the, most of the front part boiler, I would call it boiler plate. This is new to you. You've got several weeks to look at it. We recognize this is the first time you're seeing it. We can send these to you electronically, obviously, but it really is the, what are you saying at the end that I think is the focus of your review?
Yeah, you guys turned this around really quickly since Tuesday to really create good messaging on this. Does anyone have any suggestions at this point? Okay. Yeah, it reads really well. Thank you very much for trying to capture what we shared with you.
Jeannie's jumping around, but I will tell you, the, the operating, the, the operating ordinance and the resolution related to you have to authorize Wake County and Durham County to levy the taxes have not changed at all. So, so what you've had in your documents is, remains untouched from your CIP discussion. So we really don't have anything to offer to you. Again, you've got lots of boiler plate. You're giving me explicit authorities, which you've given me in the past, but it's your responsibility to review those. But we haven't, we haven't changed that from what you've seen in the past or what's been in this document.
That's basically your annual operating budget ordinance. Just going to show those on the screen for you. Other one is, is your authorizing Wake County and Durham County to levy taxes and to levy the stormwater fee.
So as we mentioned, the budget portal remains open. Kathy and her staff have been working to make sure that people are aware, that they can still comment through next Monday at, not next Monday, the 10th, at 5:00. And, and so we know we've had some additional input, maybe not all completely budget-related, but we will get you that information as, as we prepare the package for final delivery to you next week.
One final thing just to mention, I do have a correction on one fee in the planning department, and it is related to the site plan, minor non-residential. And it was just an error that was caught by the planning department, and we've made that modification. And the same thing can be said, if we see any basic, general typos, we're catching those and working on those. So those things will be fixed. But anytime I have something like that, I'd like to bring it to your attention.
So are we done with that first part of our work session? You guys want to take a quick 10-minute break? And then we'll come back for the next part. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilmember Johnson.
I just have two comments. I really want to thank you, Jeannie and Martha, for your help on this. You, you really listened clearly and deeply to everything we said the other night, and you came up with a solution to, I think, satisfy all of us. So I really appreciate that. And I know that was not easy because we didn't give you a whole lot of time. So I know, I know we didn't really get a chance to read through everything, but you explained it as we went through it. So I really appreciate that. And then my only other comment, and I'm going to do this every year since we put it in the budget because I'm totally opposed to it, I do not like Section 10 where it says, pay and merit plans. Item D, which is stipends for town council, will be adjusted annually at the same effective actual average merit percentage as staff. I have never been in support of that, and I'm not in support of that this year. So just to make sure that's on the record.
Thank you very much. It is 7:31. We're going to take a break until 7:41.
Public forum laws and awareness, First Amendment rights, and open meeting laws is not so unusual. So I tried to put together this slide to show you what, what you can think about as you discern whether you want to construct a social media policy for elected and appointed officials in Town of Morseville. On the left-hand side are really the basics, what, what, what we have found are the always-haves. And these are points around open meetings laws, the fact that quorum applies when you are dialoguing with each other on social media. The quorum rules apply. So when you have four of you together and commenting, I'll scroll down. This is pretty much the main slide for just for your consideration. So the, that really does apply, and it's something that you must be mindful of at all times. The, the fact that a social media platform has been found, there's some conversation around whether it's a public forum or whether it's a limited public forum. It has generally been thought of as a, at least a limited public forum, which means there are very important things that you need to remember with regard to First Amendment rights when you are dialoguing with people on social media, when you are discovering or thinking about whether you want to omit their comments, delete their comments, and whether you should or shouldn't do that. Public record statutes apply, and those are very meaningful to us here in the town. You have to have a very deep concern about whether you're going to delete comments, as I mentioned. And there should be really careful thought given to what you're going to do when you direct people to the right place. So directing people to the town websites and to the staff for expert answers to their questions. So the, the more robust considerations for this group, if you want to think about a, a more deep commitment to a code of conduct, would apply to those bulleted points on the right-hand side. In the instances where there is some conversation around this in a social media policy, or in the literature, or in the academic world, or blogs and the articles that I, that were available to me to read, they focus on these particular points. Number one, first and foremost, agreeing to a very robust commitment around separating all your personal and your professional and your campaign platforms. Much more easier said than done, but a separate personal platform, let's say Facebook page, a official, more official Facebook page where you reference your town council status, or your mayor status, or your mayor pretend status, with very specific ways of referencing your picture even, your title, those kinds of things. And then a third page, if you're campaigning for office, mayor colleague for office, or TJ colleague for mayor. So a, a strong words around that and a commitment to that. And then, then, secondly, a, a commitment to a very constructive dialogue and a very specific set of conduct rules, or set of rules around the kinds of remarks that you're, you're going to hold yourself accountable for. And when they are included, they are included in, in these four sort of buckets, undignified remarks, avoiding discourteous remarks, avoiding disruptive statements, and avoiding personal attacks. Lastly, for your consideration, is thought around, some strong language around being careful about retweeting, sharing, what you're going to share, who you're going to share, because that implies sometimes an endorsement or a partnership in the eyes of the public. So all of that is to say that the, on the left-hand side is what, in my view, I would, would say to you, you need to have. On the right-hand side is conversation points for you to think about if you really want to hold yourself to a higher standard of conduct. And we can get very specific about what, what that policy would look like. There is a draft that we provided in the packet. I'll certainly be glad to do that to the extent that you'd like to. This is what I would call a skeletal draft of what the beginnings of a really good social media policy for elected and appointed officials in the Town of Morseville would look like. It would be, first and foremost, a, a list of points made around quorum, being mindful of the First Amendment, being mindful of public records laws, being mindful of the, the fact that you are privy to confidential information, that you're not going to share that, and being careful about how you direct other people to appropriate resources. Secondarily, another piece of that very strong, robust policy would be best practices for conduct for, for you as elected officials, and also for those individuals who are appointed as committee members for your town council advisory committee, advisory committees. And here is where we talk about, very specifically, what we're going to do to maintain personal, professional, and campaign social media platforms, holding ourselves to a code of honesty, and then again, talking about we're going to avoid discourteous, undignified, disruptive statements, and personal attacks, and then being careful about how we share or retweet or like. What's not on this page for you, for you to think about is if you decide that we want to construct something like this, and I'm happy to do that, what you're going to agree upon in terms of consequences. In fact, the, the policies that do exist don't have robust consequences around that. So that's something that Martha and I talked about in terms of, it's a conversation for the council to have. If you, if you want to put in here also, this is what we're going to do, here's how we're going to abide by it, and here's how we're going to censor or, you know, provide consequences to and for each other. And that's another thing for consideration as well. Limited resources for us on that, but we could, I would be glad to come up with some ideas for you there. So, so the short answer is, this is a little bit innovative, what you want to do. I think it's where municipalities are going. Most municipalities are dipping their toe, at least in thinking around this. Very few municipalities have actually, that I have found in my research and in my conversation, have actually taken a step to dra- have actually taken a step to draft and pass this policy. I think it is a very wise, thoughtful conversation for you to have, recognizing that people want to engage with you, and they are doing it largely online right now. We do have a very powerful social media presence. I share this with you, and I'm happy to answer any questions, or if there are any other conversations around these points you want to have with me, I'm happy to do that now.
Mayor Pro Tem, your thoughts?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Kathy and Martha, for working through this very complex and, I guess, pioneering area. The social media is, in my opinion, a limited access, because it's not like a newspaper, anybody can buy it off the street. You have to subscribe to Nextdoor, you have to subscribe to Facebook or Twitter, whatever. It's a subscription kind of thing, so not everybody, depending on settings, not everybody can really see all the content. And so, it's not completely transparent. With that said, I don't believe it's practical to expect an elected official to have three accounts on each platform. When we run for office, I think everybody has a political page, whether they're either a candidate or an incumbent, and they communicate about their campaign, about their issues, about their platforms on that page. If someone is an incumbent, it is impossible for them to maintain two accounts, one a candidate and so forth. And it's also unfair to people that have followed them, that expect to have the single source of information about that individual from that source. So, I don't think that is exactly a way forward. I do think the two accounts is a good concept. I personally mix that, because professionally, this is my job right now, and I can't distinguish between professional and town, because it's one and the same. But, when I go and explore issues that are important to me as a council member, I would put that on my council page. When things are important to me individually, that might not even apply to town, I will put that on my personal page. So, some of that fine tuning should be discussed, I'm sure, with council. So, one political page. The other thing is regarding consequences, I am not prepared to discuss consequences tonight. I have to read this policy and think about it and so forth. I'd like a lot of your suggestions, but I think if we could, it would be a very positive thing if we could agree on just the outline. The other can wait, but we shouldn't hold that up. We should try to look at this and craft this in a way that is implementable and supportable. But, you know, if we try everything, we might not get this done in a time way. So, thank you.
One of the things that I did to support this effort was actually talk to, I think Kathy talked to the social media, in fact, may have visited over in Durham, but I talked to the manager, who was there at the time that the Durham policy was implemented. Their issues were completely and totally different than what we've experienced here. But, to the point of the consequences, they, in their policies, not social media policies, and Kathy's correct, what Tom Bonfield told me was, is people do call them, because when they went out looking for one to address their issues, they just don't exist. So they are one of the pioneers, and so they get lots of calls, very similar to us. But they have, as a part of their town council procedures, a censure provision. And that's where council makes a determination or decision about another council member. He indicated that has never been used for any purpose. So even as it exists, and I think what Kathy's saying, it's, staff has no ability to enforce, really, nor does council. That's just one of the discussion points. But even when it's in place in a municipality, it hasn't been used. And I've had similar conversations with Raleigh, and they have a similar situation there. So just information as you consider this.
Would anyone else like to chime in? Councilmember Johnson?
I'll just give my two cents right now on censure. When we were first putting this town council meeting rules and procedures together, I think it was at that time, we talked about putting a censure clause in there, and I'm not a fan of that either, quite frankly. I think you could, I'm just not a fan of it. So if we could come up, somewhere along the lines, you talked about how maybe we should review everything once a year, and I think maybe you talked more about the ethics policy and the conduct. I would prefer to do that, and just kind of remind each other in a more positive way. And then even to the point where we sign something and agree to it, or just put a little more skin in the game, I'm fine with that. Yeah, but I agree, the whole censure thing is, it doesn't really sit well with me, because it just doesn't.
I think I hear you, and I bring that up just for your, and I'm glad to see that's making you think about conversation, but the proactive part of creating this policy is really, I think, where you want to go, and in so doing, that's where the meat of the action, that's where the meat of the moving forward is. It's not in sort of thinking about what's going to happen if it doesn't work, because it's going to, I think, be effective if it's constructed in a way that you feel will help you, you know, in your life as council member. So, it's really the point.
Just add one more thing. I appreciate the list of items that you put together. I've not been concerned about any of you doing everything on the right side of the page, so, but I think it's important to have a policy in place so that, you know, we don't, we remind ourselves once a year, and we don't forget what we've agreed to in the future. But, you know, but I'm with Vicki. I think we start with something we can all agree to, and then over time, like everything else, all our other policies, and everything, our procedures, and everything we do, we add to it and fine tune it and tweak it as needed.
Councilmember Ralph?
I think that the social media policy is, I think before we come up with any policy, there should always be an agreement among the council, and I think there is with the people sitting here tonight, that we use our social media to share our ideas, share our vision, share our town ideas, our goals. I think when it's used to, when you have a disweedy amount of vote, or you start using it as political, you know, whatever's happened in the last year, it starts, it's like a cancer that spreads, and it creates distrust among the councils. So, I think that in the last four years, when Mayor Stolman took over, I saw less use of social media by council members in that four years. And I felt it was a really good time, because we were able to just focus and have that conversation. Last year and a half, I feel like a lot of our time has been spent dealing with social media posts by council members, a lot of time is spent dealing with Facebook posts and Nextdoor neighbor posts that are putting information, oftentimes it's inaccurate, and it hurts the town. And somehow, I think that we need to, now that we have you on board, we have to make sure that the real information on any decision we make is getting out there. I know you do that. But once someone puts on Nextdoor, so I think the problem is not only among us, there is a problem with, and if anyone's listening tonight, I'm sorry if they get upset, but I think there is a problem with how citizens are sometimes engaging with this council. I mean, I think you can send an email, I love this, I know I'm getting out of myself, but this idea of forums, something where people have an opportunity to engage and discuss. Posting something on a Nextdoor neighbor site of what your opinion is, is not an open and honest and transparent communication. And that has been going on, I mean, it's the worst it's ever been in Morrisville. And this, we're not the only town that's had this. But, so I just say that, because I think the most important thing is what we agree to, and we have to stand by it. Because, but we can't regulate First Amendment rights, and if a council member does want to come in and use it for political purposes, and we don't have any kind of consequences, then that's something that we might have to deal with again and again and again. And I think the final thing I'll say is that we have to worry about the image and the reputation of the town. We have businesses watching at us, we have people wanting to invest, and they're not going to want to invest in a town where there's just division among the council, there's angst among citizens coming in, and, you know, when people have their right to express their opinion. But I think there's got to be a way of our town setting a standard, that we say, okay, this is what we expect from ourselves, and we would really appreciate it as a public that you engage in this way. You can come and speak at the comments, you can send an email, and they can do what we ask. They might just say, forget it, I can do whatever I want. Well then, that's it, right?
And I would just remind council that part of, I think what you're aching for, and we all want, is a conversation with the citizens in the community, and we want them to feel comfortable, and we want to build relationships with them, and we want to have input, feedback, ideas. And so, part of what's happening in the next year is an effort on the part of Town Manager Page and I to use a community engagement platform, which is a separate and more constructed platform, where you will be able to dialogue out and get feedback and data in. So, just want to remind you that that's down the road, and I think that's something that's really going to help to fill that need, for that individual who is not able to come and present to you and be here and meet with you face to face. So that's down the road. And social media is here to say good or bad, but it is certainly not always an effective place to engage in dialogue, and I understand what you're saying.
No, add, and what I was trying to say was that, and Mayor Colley doesn't use the social media much that way, but I just, it was two mayors back, but just for the record it shows. So I think it's just styles and personalities on the councils, that comment wasn't directed towards this mayor, but it just seemed like that four years, there was less social media engagement, that's what I was trying to say.
And if I could jump in, I just want to reiterate, and it's really one of the things that you may not have paid full attention to in the operating budget. But what Kathy's talking about is not a, just not a budget portal where you tell, it's a one-way, you get information. The tool that Kathy's talking about is, if you wanted to have a dialogue about something, it would be a way for not only you to talk with the public, but the public to talk amongst each other and build on ideas. So, the fact that there's not a presence here, or they may have missed a meeting, and all of that would be information that would make your conversations more rich and robust about what the community is talking about. So that's the kind of tool we're talking about to complement, just what do you think about this kind of stuff.
Councilmember Caramilla?
Thank you, Kathy, this is wonderful. Are we going to roll this into code of conduct, just as a subset of it?
I'd like to pause on that and come back to that separately. I think Kathy's recommending a code of conduct specifically incorporated into a social media policy, then there's an overall code of conduct. I think I've gotten some inquiries from council members that I'm going to talk about in a few minutes. Is that acceptable?
Councilmember Schlink, please.
Yes, yes, thank you. I appreciate your efforts, and I want them to continue.
Okay, we'll all have a second bite, but I just want to echo somewhat I heard from Mayor Pro Tem, that I have a couple of different accounts, one personal and one official. And I think it'd be a little difficult to create a third for campaigning. So I'd support the encouragement of people to have a personal Facebook, and a professional, and a personal Twitter, and a professional, because that seems to be manageable. I'd be a little bit hesitant to kind of really encourage or require our committee members to do that same thing, because that's kind of a big ask for them to sort of separate those out. I think as residents, they can not need to have the second account, but that's something that we can discuss. We're already asking them to volunteer their time. So those are kind of my thoughts on that, but I like how Mayor Pro Tem presented her ideas. I'm in agreement with those.
Councilmember Johnson?
That was the other point I was going to bring up, too. I like the idea that we were going to include our committee members to some degree in all of this, I think that's important, too, but I think it's too much to ask them to have separate accounts. I think it's fine, we already asked them to conduct themselves in a professional manner. I think it's okay to encourage it on social media, too, but yeah, I think we're asking too much for them to have separate accounts. And some of them may not even post anything about Morrisville, quite frankly, you know, so, but anyhow. So, can I make a comment to that? I'm not a, now, doesn't mean it won't happen in the future, but when I'm looking at the people here on this table, I'm not sure we do that. We don't do a lot of, I think what I see us doing is sharing information, just resharing, you know, there's a meeting and come out. And so, and I don't, you know, we might like each other's posts like that, but I don't, we're not communicating with each other through social media at all. I don't, if somebody disagrees with me, if I'm, I don't think any of us have done that.
And we monitor that, and we have not seen that, we've never been alerted to, oh my goodness, four of you are dialoguing and commenting. That has, in my tenure here, we have not seen that to be an issue.
And so, just to add a little bit more to that, I will tell you, I discourage dialogue through social media. When somebody reaches out to me and wants to know why I did something, and I will say, I am happy to meet with you. I think it is a poor place to have a really thoughtful and considerate conversation, and especially when you're not sitting face to face or on a phone at a bare minimum, where you can kind of understand each other and have a real, like Martha said, a robust conversation. So I, and I'm, you know, I don't think anybody else does that, quite frankly. But doesn't mean we shouldn't have a policy that outlines all this. I think that's totally appropriate, but anyhow, that's just two cents on that.
And just, I really hope that we do continue to explore this and create a policy, because just reading through these materials, it gives me food for thought about how to do better and sort of raise the bar of how we conduct ourselves. So I think even just having to read through it once, for anyone on the council or future committee members, will really help to sort of set a higher standard and have more cordial and productive interactions in general. So I think this is a really good step that we're taking. Looking around, does anyone have any other thoughts on this first part of Kathy's presentation? Okay, so I think staff has direction to move forward, do you have enough to go forward with and sort of start really drafting something?
Absolutely, certainly. And I'll be careful of very specific language around encouraging and expecting, and call your attention to that when it's in there for you to think about and decide upon. Relatively quickly, I know that you have lots of important work to do tonight. The forum notes for your consideration, again, are in response to a council request about, you know, what could we do, what are the possibilities to frame more open conversation and dialogue with citizens? And again, here's where I looked to some of our neighbors, what some of our neighbors in this state, and even some of our peers in other states are doing, and what's working, what's not working, and how they're doing it. So I framed for you a, to a couple of pages, there's a graph, and this is a visual that I was speaking with Town Major Page, and I were having a conversation, and she felt that it was a nicer snapshot of our options here for consideration. These are not These are not all the options, these are the options that I found in my research and my conversation. The request was that there be a completely open conversation, a Q and A opportunity for, for the public to come in and speak with you while you're sitting at the dais in a very directed, non-topic-specific situation where the questions were not being reviewed prior to that time. There was no, and my understanding was that could we do this without any kind of framework around what's okay, what's off limits, what's on limits, and all those kinds of things. In my review, and it was pretty robust, I found that that really did not exist when you are speaking to a group of elected officials. It is very commonplace in a campaign environment, you know, where you have sort of candidate forums. I could not find in my research and in my conversation with my peers, and, and any time when that was happening in a town council elected setting. So I wanted to share that with you first and foremost. What I did find, if you flip to the next couple of pages, are varying platforms or forum models that are used in different settings, and to the extent that you want to consider these, because some are more scripted and more sort of programmed, and some are much less programmed and scripted, but they demand from you a very high level of trust of each other when you go down those roads. So, in order from sort of the most scripted and most formal to the least scripted and formal is, is what I've got here. So first and foremost, you can have a, a town-specific town council forum, and that's, that's a situation where you would, we would set up a broad topic, we would invite people, we would open it up to the public, we would have some level of review of questions before the person was able to come up here and ask you a question, and you answer it. There'd be some expectation that you would clarify that your answer was an official answer, or if you felt you wanted to make a personal comment, you would clarify that. When this happens, it is typically moderated by the mayor. So it would be a situation where mayor would be acting as calling upon and directing answers, directing individuals to answers unless the person has asked specifically that Town Councilmember Rao answer this question. You can take that and put it into a roundtable meeting situation, much, this is where you, I have found other municipalities where they'll, based on a, instead of varying the topic, you vary the group. So you have all HOA presidents come and join you here, and you sit at a roundtable, and you're all together, and typically that is less moderated, and, but it can be highly facilitated by one individual. Both of those two options can be recorded and streamed live. You can take the one large table situation and do a round robin kind of table situation, so small table conversations where you guys are the ones moving. So people are coming, they're talking to you, and then you jump up after 15 minutes and go to another table and have a conversation. This requires a higher level of trust because it's less facilitated. Keep in mind, it's hard for us to record that and show it to the public as well. And you're sort of, it's you and your group kind of having a conversation, so you're much less facilitated in that situation. Then there's the sort of, what I call the mix and mingle options. Various municipalities have tried versions of mixing and mingling before a meeting, during a meeting, over coffee, like coffee with the council, and then to the, to the really more technical, but less, less often you see these sort of Twitter and Facebook live chats and live meetings. Those are getting to be less and less popular as people are moving to other online forums. So, so these, depending on how comfortable you feel with each other and having conversations where you can't hear each other all the time, and how comfortable you feel in a less formalized situation, you can, we can go from sort of one extreme to the other. Keep in mind that with, with some of the forums, the roundtable in particular, and with the whole group topic forum here, we can incorporate staff here as well. Staff can be present to sort of be experts on topics if you'd like them to be. And that's, that's something to consider, too, as you think about whether you want to do coffee with council, or, you know, mix and mingle before a town council meeting, maybe. During can get a little bit dicey if you're having a, you know, an agenda that's a little bit controversial. I have found these to be in practice somewhere to various degrees, all over the country. More so, the topic, question and answer, and the roundtable are more popular. Offer those for your consideration, and I would just ask.
I'll just add that one of the things that council immediately raised as a concern about this when it was first discussed was the upcoming filing season and when you might want to consider starting something like this, if that's, and, and I think what we, what we know is, is depending on what your preference is, that would give time staff to prepare. As your manager, I have to remind you how difficult it is to capture you on other than council member or council meeting nights with your other commitments and workload and getting everybody together. That's always tremendously difficult, just as you consider what these options you might want to explore.
True enough. Mayor Protem.
Well, this is a lovely list, and I think that it gives us some flexibility on the kind of format that we want to reach the public with. One of the origins of this request was that a lot of our public are not able to be physically present in the chambers for meetings. Some have family commitments, some have professional commitments, and, you know, related to that. And the town hall virtual format combined with a more personal format was to provide a gateway for people to have an interactive dialogue with the council. So the last item with the live Twitter conference, Facebook Live conference, I would actually recommend that we kind of, another slash might be a webinar, or some sort of web service, because those are only two social media outlets, as you mentioned, and there could be a third way of reaching out. But unfortunately, the town does not have a government channel like the town of Cary does, and I've seen a very effective segment where Cary does to council members, and they highlight a really critical project or a really critical topic to the town. And we don't need to see all their counsel in those webinars or, or, you know, they're, you know, different hot topics, but it is good to see a few. So we're probably trying to overreach if we want to make sure all six or seven of us are there at every single one of these. I, I don't think it's feasible. I think we might need to think about a quorum, or maybe a couple people based on the types of forums that are relevant here. So, so my thoughts are different kinds of media, like a webinar would be an enhancement, and also smaller groups might be just as effective. I do like the round robin, asking HOA presidents and certain subgroups to kind of do that small focus group. That's really nice, but we want to lower the barriers to public engagement, so we're, we need to think creatively. We can't always afford the face-to-face conversations, so, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
So, I'm going to kind of follow up on that, too. I thought the, the original request was to have something that was a little more informal, but although I do like the idea about having, you know, some topics that two or three council members talk about, we do put a YouTube, put it on a YouTube, our YouTube channel, whatever. I like that idea, but I see that as something separate. I think the original request was to have a more informal, again, just a couple of council members, maybe, not all of us, because, yeah, I don't think we're, we have difficulties getting together as it is. But having it not a topic-specific, but taking questions. So, so to Vicki's comments, we already have the ability to livestream. Why can't we have our residents submit questions ahead of time, or even night of, have somebody monitoring, you know, a special email account where folks can email in a question, and then it, it, time, you know, with time permitting, the questions then be asked of who was ever here. I, I thought that was the original kind of request. Not that, these are all really good, too. I will tell you, though, I think, I think we need to start, we need to start small and then build to some of these options. And some of these are very staff-intensive, which I, you know, having a, a coffee chat offline somewhere and expecting staff to be there, I, 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 that's not where I would start. I'm not sure I would ever get there.
So, I'll add before anybody else speaks, but what occurred to me when Mayor Protem Scroggins-Johnson was speaking is, you know, Kathy's drafted a strategic communications plan. If you want, especially if you're saying, yes, we wouldn't want to start this until, for example, January of 2020, she would then have time to develop templates for test drives or test runs for some of these periodically throughout the year so that we could see how they worked or how they might work or not work, not only for council but for, for citizens, without making a firm decision. Is, is she, she's always looking for the most creative and appropriate way for any message, as well as to meet the needs you have as a council individually and collectively. So that might be something you might want to consider.
Councilmembers, link?
Well, Martha proposed is fine with me. I mean, I don't think we start anything until next year, and I'd always like the idea of having our own YouTube channel, and then two or three of us just go over transportation, kind of what other towns do, it looks good, I think it's good, put out useful information.
Kind of like Cary Matters, but without the full channel. Okay. I had a couple of thoughts. I do like the idea of the mix and mingle before meetings. Sometimes that already happens a little bit, very informally, but if, maybe once a quarter. We said that most of the council will try to be here at 5:30 for a 6:30 meeting. Come say hi, get a soda or something like that. That might be a nice opportunity for everybody. That's high on the trust side, that, because we're all having individual conversations, so everyone's, it's their own personal opinion, but it's, it's a good outreach opportunity. I also like the idea of the roundtable for HOAs. I think we already do something like that with Triangle Community Coalition, that business. We do that at least once a year with the developers, they have staff for that. I think duplicating that for HOAs would be really useful, I think, as that's a really good communication channel that I don't think that we're utilizing enough. So those were two things that I think that are kind of small bites that might be doable. But like you said, for the roundtable, it's hard to get us all together, and that's, and that one's staff-intensive. So I agree that maybe starting in January, get some ideas, we can maybe do some videos before that, perhaps, on topics that matter, like one talking about what just happened in the budget, like having just Martha had something out would be great. Any other thoughts? We haven't heard from a couple of you guys. Do you want to weigh in? Councilmember Rao at all, or Councilmember Caramella? No? Okay. So we're good. Do you guys have enough to go with that? So it sounds like we're not doing too much, but we're giving you some ideas of things to sort of pursue. Thanks for preparing all this. We really appreciate all the resource development you've looked at.
So, so I'm going to just follow up that, that everything's interrelated, and, and some of the, you know, situations we've dealt with over the past year have, have sort of resulted in Erin and I and Eric now by association to review our meeting rules and procedures, which we, we periodically do anyways. But, but what we've also provided to you is, we did a pretty comprehensive evaluation of what our, our peer communities within Wake County and Durham, we already had Durham as a model, that there's just some other components of their policies, in particular related to closed sessions and public address, that maybe firm up or put some more teeth into some of our provisions, you know, what can public address speakers say and not say, clarifications about address, the mayor's authority to cut off and determine when comments are appropriate or not. So I, I've just tried to provide a summary of some of those things, and then we had some questions about closed session. Again, it's, it's really related to something Kathy's already mentioned several times, it's what you commit to each other versus what may be legal, that, that these things could come into our policies, and it really relates to what is the code of conduct. We have an ethics portion to this policy that it's there. We have, and Liz Johnson has mentioned, we don't review these, we don't sign off on these, we don't commit to these, that, that may be a practice that we want to do annually that, that just sort of reaffirms and reassesses, and, you know, there's probably times to do that. I, I think staff would recommend that. We, we do have a couple others that, I think we want to bring these policies to you, but allow you to look at this and say, yes, we want to commit to these things or not, because it really is all about a commitment you have to each other and, and how you want to be as the collective body of a council. We, we do have the e-comment to put in, there, again, there's just some, some oddball ones that are in there that we're probably ready for an update to this policy so that they're in place before we would have a new elected official onboard. So, I mean, with your permission, we're happy to draft something to come through a briefing item for you to review and edit. The, the one other item I would like to sort of get some consensus on is our, our public address time slot. So we established it at seven at the beginning of the year. I, I think our unintended consequence was also moving the time to six o'clock, and I'm a believer that you need to allow things to work their way through, but I guess my real question is, is do you want to move it to a different time, perhaps 6:30 instead of seven, to facilitate the, the ability to not have it interrupt the agenda? Separately, this would probably be where you would want to talk about, is your meeting agenda format what you want it to be? And again, we don't have to decide all of that tonight, but just sort of planting those seeds for you to consider. Yeah, our code of ethics is really what Cary calls code of conduct. It does not address some of the things that we've talked about, which are your commitments to each other. It's, it's the state ethics law and conflicts of interest and things. It isn't about the commitment you're making to each other. So that's, that's really what, what we're talking about here, is, is what we individually commit to.
Councilmember Johnson.
So do you, you just said a lot there, Martha. Do you want feedback on the seven versus 6:30? Because I will tell you, I think it's very uncomfortable.
That one would be great, because we would, that's one that is external-facing, and we would want to have some time, I wouldn't say implement it next meeting. I'd let people know we're changing it July, first July meeting, is.
So I would say the seven doesn't seem to be working right. It doesn't, and, and the other thing is, we've said that we are going to stop at that time from whatever we're doing, and we don't do that either. So, so I think we have to start doing that, and I'm fine with moving it to 6:30, but we need to stop at 6:30 and allow folks to speak.
So I'll, with all due respect, I'll clarify, I, I did a lot of polling of others, and they don't stop in the middle of an item. They do wait, and I think we've tried to incorporate that language, get to a stopping point, not cut off at a specific time, certain, in the middle of a presentation or something else.
I'd be in favor of saying that a public address will generally happen between six, sometime after 6:15. I don't want to give us a specific time. I remember we did it, I wasn't really sure why we had to give it a specific, specific time. It falls within the agenda, generally in the first half hour, 45 minutes. So identifying the actual time...
That was not the case when we were meeting at midnight. That's why we did that. It was not the case. People were here at nine, 9:30, waiting to do public address.
Okay.
Based on what was on the agenda, yeah, people were sitting here for a really long time. And then when we moved the meeting to six, you can't, I, I, it's kind of, I think, difficult to ask people to be here at six. You know, when they're already challenged to be here at 6:30, so.
Councilmember, actually, Mayor Pro Tem indicated an interest earlier, and then we'll go to Councilmember Raoul.
I just wanted to comment also on the timing of the public comments. The goal really was to give people an idea when to appear so they could participate in that public comment session. Public hearings, we've kind of let that flow with the agenda as a natural cadence item. What I feel, being, you know, the chair of a couple meetings, is that it naturally flows after consent agenda. We naturally have a place where we could get engaged with the public, you know, comments. It would probably be between 6:15 and 6:30. The public might have a challenge getting here, but the, but it just naturally flows after that point in time. And they could be on the agenda at that time. It's when we have presentations that could be one to four presentations. Those are unpredictable. Our, our participation level is unpredictable sometimes for presentations. They could include Q and A. They could include just a simple presentation. That's where we've gotten into trouble, into the variability of it. So I'm in support of either a 6:30 or it being moved to a point on the agenda that's earliest like after consent agenda, as far as that goes. That way we are not having the public wait around until 10:00 PM. That was real difficult for me to watch, because I know these people. And when, it was a high school student that really hurt. He did a presentation. He wanted to also make a comment, and he stayed very late. And school gets really early in the morning for high school students. So we need to be mindful of that. The other thing, I like these proposed changes for public address. We need to talk a little bit more on a council regarding public hearings with this 20 minutes, 20 minutes. It's still a little bit awkward to implement. I thought with the rezoning case, it was very effective. It was nice to hear all of the pros and then all of the cons in support or non-in support, because it really helped me balance and understand the nuances. And the speakers also could participate in a more consistent way, building their case over the number of speakers, even though they had not really coordinated their comments. It seemed to flow better, and it seemed to be a logical kind of way of doing it. And then I'm going to pause and then come back for my closed session comments. But those are the two things, the meeting timing for public comments, and then the public address, public hearing.
And a quick comment, the 20 opposed, 24 has actually been a part of our policy. That's not a new change. It's just not one we've followed.
Councilmember Raoul, please.
Yeah, I, my comments have to be just about the closed session. Am I taking, are we, are we? Oh, no. Yeah, the 6:30, I'm, I'm fine with, I mean, that's, I mean...
Any other thoughts on the time or on the public address portions? And then we'll move on to closed session. Councilmember Garamilla?
Yes, it is just proper because I agree, you know, if we're dragging either to seven or like before, trying to keep the, you know, the meeting then, and 6:30 is pretty fair. And that gives them sufficient time to come in.
6:30 is fine.
Thank you. Got 6:30. Any other public address thoughts about some of these proposed changes on that end? Nope?
Liz, where is that topic that says that the public address should be addressed to the council? Is there a rule regarding that?
That is one of the items, is, is public address speakers are supposed to be speaking to council, not addressing individual council members. So, so what, I think that's on my sheet here. We, we have some courtesy rules in, in our policies existing. They're not as definitive as some of the others I've seen. And the key is the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, if she's presiding, has the, you're providing that chair of the meeting, the authority to make that determination within the guidelines that are established, that they can be ruled out of order or not. That, that's just the, the practical protocol of what occurs.
We used to print that on the agenda. It used to be on the back page of the agenda. And I may, I may be going back a couple of years, but...
And it's posted up there, and it's posted out there. And when they sign up, council is very open and receptive to speakers. And so that's, we get a little looser than the formal nature of the council meeting.
I have one more comment to make on this section before we move on. We did talk about require a physical street address of a home or business. I get it, a business, that might be a little different, but maybe we need, here's where we run into problems. Where, where do you reside? I think, I think the word reside needs to somehow be in there. Reside or where is your business, where does your business reside? Then we get a real, true, physical address.
And again, that, that's council's discussion. I don't think any council member would say, we don't hear from everybody that comes to speak. So you aren't listening to just Morrisville residents ever. So, so a, a prescriptive, you can't talk if you don't live here is not the suggestion. It just clarifies, as you hear those comments, are they within Morrisville or related to Morrisville is the way. That's just how I've seen that in some places.
Yeah, so to clarify, I'm not advocating that we not listen to those outside of Morrisville.
Absolutely not.
Right. No, I'm, I'm, I'm 100% behind anybody that, that wants to, can come before council and speak. That, that's not my concern. My concern is that we get a true and real address of where somebody resides. That we've had that problem in the past, and it has concerned our residents that live here, not, who are paying attention, not just some on council. So, no, I totally agree. Everybody and anybody is welcome and allowed to speak before council, totally.
Thank you. Councilmember Raoul? Yep, we're moving on.
No, I just had a point on...
Councilmember Link, yes.
But there's some nuances with some of the stuff we're saying. So when we say the mayor, for instance, can overrule somebody, at the same time, the council can ask for a vote to overrule the mayor.
That's technically accurate.
That, that's sort of...
I think we're making it more difficult. This doesn't, I don't remember in seven years ever coming up. Same thing with your, what you're talking about, Liz. I really, if somebody wants to take the time to come up, I don't, you know, and that means somebody's going to start to question somebody up there about, well, you don't really live here, or you don't really, the address you just gave is not right. Don't think we ought to be trying to do stuff like that. I just don't think it comes up that often.
I agree, and hopefully it won't come up anymore.
It does at staff level. We hear about it.
We have an instance just a month or two ago where somebody was using a P.O. box, and, and that's...
It's for itself.
So maybe to you and me, but not to the citizens of Morrisville who are also paying attention. I've heard from citizens that were offended that somebody would come here and pretend to live here by using a P.O. box. Or it wasn't a P.O. box. It was a, a post office box. It had a, it was a physical address, but it was just a, a box office. I've heard from residents that are concerned about that, that would like to make sure that that's clear.
Can we get back to the social media policy about what, what people say up here and how it defends other people and citizens, same way? We can go back and talk about us up here, what do we say, and then how people take that, and are they saying it true? So, I'm just...
Well, I think we're trying to hold ourselves to a higher standard and set the expectation that we expect others to do the same. But getting to the mayor's or the presiding officer's ability to stop a speaker, whoever it is will always do their best to try to protect the council and the decorum of the meeting. And yes, the rest of the council can disagree. And that's just sort of, it's difficult. It kind of weakens the group. It's better, I think, to talk about that afterwards. But let the, but back the officer doing the best that they can would be my request at the time. And then we could always let them come back in two weeks if the presiding officer was incorrect. But that would be my take on something like that.
You're saying that legally, though, that Robert's rule of orders talked about it other ways, because I've read about this in other councils. So I think you should have the right, and it dovetails into closed session, too, some of my comments about that.
Yeah, and I like, in what I was just reading, that if anyone else on the council feels that it's out of order, they can say, oh, I think that might be out of order. And then the presiding officer can sort of take a poll or decide right then also. So it's not only that person who feels like they're responsible for maintaining the meeting. So I think that's very helpful. If anyone feels that something's out of order, bring it up. Say, hey, can we pause for a second? And we can discuss it as a group. So we can move to the closed session items now, I believe. Does anyone have any comments or thoughts about these? These aren't final decisions. These are just input back to staff as this process continues.
Dad, that, the closed session, I, I, Martha can correct me or not, but it's, you have a right. Each individual council member has a right to call a closed session. So I look at these as limitations to say, well, you can't call one because you didn't do this or you didn't do that, when that's not what the statute says, which authorizes our powers.
Yep, I see this as guidelines, and as long as we're all making a good faith effort, I think that we'll all build the trust that we need to move these forward. And if someone isn't reachable, you did your best.
But it's never, hardly ever comes up in seven years I've been on the council, I was once. But I would just argue then, this should be the thing for every closed session we go into, because there are numerous times when I go into closed session, I don't know what's going on. Staff calls it. I've asked, you know, can we give more information, understand it better?
And Councilmember Link, I agree with you 100%, and that's what we're trying to do, is, is, is just from where I sit out here, and I see faces when things are mentioned, that it's clear not everybody's of the same awareness of things. And that includes even when staff has to ask for a closed session, is, is establishing a protocol that everybody is aware of the general substance of the, the closed session or, or that attempt is made, so nobody is surprised by that. Now, we're always going to be limited by the content. We're not going to tell you all the content of a closed session. But the topic, and, and this is something that we would work on with Frank, but I'm holding staff to this higher standard as well, to change that unawareness of council. We've been fortunate not to have to call any, well, take out any there. A lot of unanticipated closed sessions where you're showing up here and we're telling you about it. But it's just a renewed commitment to making sure everybody is aware of those things when they occur.
Councilmember Raoul, then Councilmember Johnson, please.
The concern I want to bring up with the closed session is, I'm fine with these guidelines and rules that we can all be onboard. Is the, and I know, this is the concern I have, is the confidentiality. I just want to clarify the confidentiality of closed sessions, because it says that the minutes and general accounts of closed sessions are sealed and not open to the public inspection, but may be unsealed by action of the council when public inspection will not frustrate the purpose of the closed session. So Attorney Gray had mentioned that a council member does have the right, if they wanted, to post closed session minutes on a personal Facebook site. But what really concerns me is, I think that a conversation, and, you know, maybe we can have it tonight or in the future, is that even though a council member has a legal right to do that based on the statutes, I personally believe that that is a significant violation of their ethical responsibility as an elected official. And I do not believe that in the past, you know, couple of months, that issue was brought to attention. Because, and, and people ask me, well, why is it such a big deal? I understand in this situation it was different. The council member that felt that he needed to protect himself by, he was sort of blindsided by not knowing why we were going to closed session. And so he, you know, went and posted it up on a Facebook site. The concern I have is, in the last seven years, eight years, we go into closed session for property acquisition matters. We could go into closed session on a, let's say it's a sexual harassment case, where the confidentiality of an employee has to be sent confidential. It could be an economic development matter, where we're actually mandated by the governor, the Commerce Department, and Wake County Economic Development to keep it. So if Amazon headquarters wanted to come here, and some council member goes up and says, oh, great, guess what? We could actually violate the whole deal, and we could lose an, an economic development opportunity and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of jobs. So I really want to clarify moving forward, because based on what's happened, there would really be nothing to prevent a council member from posting closed session minutes, Attorney Gray. And if that's the case, then why would we even have closed session then? I mean, I'm not saying I don't want it, but I just want to know. I'm, I'm really serious about this, because I think this does jeopardize the important decisions that this body has made and will have to continue to make if closed session. And now there's public, citizens out there that think that it's fine to just post closed session minutes in public. So I just want to bring that up as a serious concern I have.
So if I could speak up and speak on behalf of Attorney Gray, it was not about posting closed session minutes on Facebook. It was about disclosing information in any way or form out of a closed session. So ethics laws are established by the state. So are the legal requirements, legal requirements about closed sessions. You are talking about your commitments to each other. That's what all of this conversation is about. What do you commit to each other? The law is clear. That sounds like something Frank would say. But it is about what you're committing to each other to disclose in any way. And it's one of the reasons why you don't get email copies, and they're available here, so that we're, we're helping you protect some of those confidences. But the discussion is about commitment to each other about closed sessions. And you are correct about putting some of our actions in jeopardy by disclosing that information. But that's what, that's the core of it.
But just as a follow-up, I, I, and I, I'm not trying to disagree with the attorney. I'm just saying that there was no consequence of that action. And I'm not, I'm not pointing former council members out. But when a council member discloses information in the closed session, they are violating their ethical obligations as a council member. And I don't understand why there are not consequences for that. How can we, if there's no consequences, then what's going to stop a future council member from saying, I disagree with that? I'm going to go post whatever I want on Facebook. Then why do we even have a closed session policy?
Well, that's what we're trying to address, just the, have something a little bit more formalized and a commitment to each other. But we cannot control human beings. They're going to do what they're going to do, and we need to try to move through and build the trust that we need and make the commitments to each other, that we feel it's so important that the closed session stays closed session so as not to frustrate the purpose. So there's, there's legal around it, but First Amendment pretty much trumps everything. So that's, that's why we're going through this exercise, because we want to try to prevent something like that from happening again. And again, we're doing everything we can. But Councilmember Johnson, and then Mayor Pro Tem Scroggins Johnson, please.
So just to kind of add to that, I, I agree. Our reputation as a council, to be able to keep things in confidence, might be a little tainted. So I think that's important, that we have this conversation and we make the commitment. And I think that's what we're doing. And we haven't had, in 20 years, we haven't had the problem. So I, so, but there's, you know, there's only that first time, so this is fine. We, we're going to make the commitment, and I, I trust that, that we will follow through on that commitment. I, I just wanted to make one quick comment. I, I agree with Michael. I think there are often times when I've come in and there's been a closed session, and I'm not sure what it's all about either. So I have always made the assumption... So I have always made the assumption, and I was wrong this last time, I've always made the assumption that it was someone on staff that put a closed session on the agenda. So I think Martha's really good about sending us an email and then she'll text. And if it's a really important email, and she'll text and say, I want you all to go look at your email, and then we'll all go look at our email. And that, that's all I, I'm asking for, is that kind of courtesy when we go into closed sessions from whoever puts it on the agenda. And then, and then I'll have a little, I'll feel a little more comfortable about what we're all doing when we go into closed session. So that, that's just my two cents on that. The one thing I did want to ask about, the very last bullet says, closed session discussion shall not be discussed outside of the closed session. So I need to clarify that. I have never spoken publicly outside of the closed session, but I know we have spoken amongst ourselves or we've spoken with staff or we've asked for updates and, and then you've emailed an update with, you know, to all of us. So I, that just, that didn't sit well with me the way that's written, so.
Remember, Garamella's sort of gave, made a correction, too, about minutes are visible to town council members, not, so, so capture that as well.
Share it now? That's why we're here.
So that's what, the bullet here where it talks about the draft summary minutes are available for everyone to see, but that the, the mayor, the mayor pro tem, the town attorney and the town manager review them first. So in all my years, even when I was mayor pro tem, we never made changes. Frank is typically the scribe and, you know, we all kind of just looked at it and then that was it. Well, this last time, we all as a council had a great deal of input on the minutes to that one closed session. So I don't know, do we need to have a conversation about that? Do we need to, you know, when council members get to review the minutes, do we have a right to make changes? And then how are we going to handle that moving forward? Like I said, this has never happened before, but this last time, we all were pretty involved in what the minutes were. So I think we should have some kind of discussion about who, who adjusts the minutes and just...
I, I can just give you some context and Frank might want to weigh in about, you know, how it happens is, is you're right, usually I have one of three scribes. It's usually me, Erin, or, or Frank. And, and if you recall, closed session minutes are even substantially more abbreviated than the regular meeting minutes. It's, and on purpose to keep your conversation with each other confidential. And so we're only trying to capture the substance of the discussion. One of the things Frank and I talked about as we put this list together is some entities even have rules about whether you can make motions or not. And I think we felt like that was not necessary for ours, you know? We're not trying to over-regulate this. But you're right, there's, there's usually very little editing and, and the review is just to make sure that, the guideline is somebody else could get the general understanding of what was discussed, not all the detail, not all the chapter and verse detail, but what was discussed in a closed session. And why is that important? Because you're unsealing them sometimes a year later or even more than a year later that, that we want you to be able to recall because you're not going to be able to go back to even our regular minutes where there's just much more substance or there's audio in particular. The, the editing by council, I think, was, was just a huge anomaly because of the disclosure of closed session. I don't believe any of that would have occurred had there not been some disclosure. So now, that's my opinion. But one of the things we're trying to do as staff is, is make sure that council is aware of what those minutes are. So if, after there's a first review, because we want to do that quick, I mean, typically if Frank has taken minutes, Erin and I might be seeing it even early the next morning. And Erin's trying to do the same thing. One of the things we've talked about is just having them at your places to review when you're here. They're out of an email stream. I think that's important is to not ever get them into an email stream. It's just too easy to start deliberating by email or inadvertently even send them out somewhere that, again, would frustrate the purpose of why you went into closed session in the first place. But we think there's some procedures, if you're here and they're quick and easy for you to read, that we can do that so that you're seeing them before we unseal in December. Does that help?
It does help. But my greater, my question was, what if someone wants to make a change? But to your point, that's not happened before. This was an anomaly. I totally agree. This was a unique situation. But I think it's something we should be aware of and thoughtful of and then deal with it as it comes up, I guess. Because I can't figure out a way to, to figure it out ahead of time.
Mayor Pro Tem Scroggins-Johnson, then Councilmember Schlink.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also kind of wordsmithing or trying to make sure that there's clarity in the process of the drafting, the reviewing, the finishing, the unsealing, all that kind of stuff. After the initial draft is reviewed by the mayor and mayor pro tem, town attorney and town manager, a town council member can see the draft sealed minutes. I think it's valuable if the council member would then share any feedback with maybe the town manager that could then consider that, you know, kind of thing. That way, there's a feedback loop and it allows for, you know, if, if needed. The level of detail of the minutes is not prescribed here, and I don't know if I want to go down that road, but usually these minutes have substantive actions only. They're not, you know, a play-by-play, if you will. And I think that is appropriate level of detail for these minutes as long as we have any motions, any actions, any scope that's included. The sealed closed session minutes would be available for review by the council members only or appropriate legal team. I think that's important. But unsealed minutes is not mentioned here. And maybe it could be clarified that unsealed minutes are available for public review at any time because we're not, I don't know, are we putting them on the website for review unsealed or is that only going to be here?
The last, what, what we've done really since Erin, it was a backlog process before Erin, but Erin came in and cleaned up and went back many years. And we unsealed everything that at that point needed to be unsealed. And since then, for the last two years, we, we've presented an action item for you to unseal them, listed the dates, the topics. They were available for inspection. None of you came to inspect them. But then they become available for searching through our public archive. So, so the public is aware that they've been unsealed, that they could go look for them, but they're, that they're not part of an agenda item. They're just ultimately made available as part of our public archive. And that's just because you haven't approved unsealing them until after you've taken that action. Now, there's ways we could change that process if you felt it necessary.
Right. I just think once they're unsealed, they'll be available via the standard means of review, which would be searchable on the web or another request option.
If I'm a citizen, how am I going to search?
You actually go, there is a search portal and there is a whole archive of Morrisville records. Every meeting, every, I mean, all the resolutions, all the proclamations. If we need a demo on that, we would love to do that for you.
Well, no, I, so, but I'm, I know we're, for that, but, so as a, would they be, would they search closed session? I mean, what would they search to find this?
I, I might need Erin.
The topic?
Well, the topic is disclosed.
If they just wanted to search all our closed session minutes, how would they do that? Because I don't, I've not gone and done that.
I will find out that answer.
I'm going to do that tonight.
Erin, Erin isn't here this evening. I'm not sure I want to call Eric on the spot just yet for that. He's not even looking at me, so I'm going to say no.
Look, I technically could have just gone to those, back to the search type and called him, called, called session minutes.
We'll, we'll get more information on that. That's a good question.
Comments? I, the closed session, I'm in agreement with the, the second bullet, certainly general purpose and content of the closed session is practical in order to be able to consider the motion and to add or go into closed session. I think that's what we need to under, I mean, I think we, that's what I'm looking for when, whenever staff does it. And then I would just, to Councilmember Rao's point, I too am, I think that, I think if, and Kathy kind of offered to do it when we talked about it with the social media, how other people do this, come up with, I think there can be consequences from like a professional standpoint, how professional boards do it. I think the council, if they so showed, so desired, could probably make a statement and kind of chastise that person who broke the rules, the code of conduct rules or whatever rules they, or in this case, the closed session. And I think that would be a deterrent. Now, I'm not trying to discuss that tonight. I'm just saying, but she's offered to come up with some of those. I think they're out there and I think that might be something that a future council could look at to kind of rectify things.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on closed session items? Okay. This has been a good meeting. We've gotten through a lot of good work tonight.
And then I, I think I'd just like, and we sort of touched on it, but, but maybe implement a part of our January meeting, just a review, acknowledgement perhaps that we've had that discussion. Many, you know, have a code of ethics or code of conduct that you sign that we don't have in place here that, that we could evaluate as a part of these procedures.
No other business, I entertain a motion, oh, sorry, Town Manager Page.
Easy. One of the other things that I had as a, Kathy, if you would pass around, that I had as, as just an item in progress is just some statements about the vacancy. So, so this is a summary document just of the fact that there was a resignation, the office filing, the fact that our charter guides the vacancies, and then that council talked about this. So if you want to skip down to the third set there, that council talked about this and several reasons why council indicated they were leaving the seat vacant. So again, happy to edit or modify this. This is really for your purposes. Also wanted to sort of tell you what staff is doing, and I do have a couple, couple questions and comments. We, we are continuing to update the website and, and provide communications. We'll, we'll develop a communications plan to let people know about your decision once you sort of weighed in on that. I'd like to confirm that all council members are going to be here June 24th for a new council photo, so dress well. And then I have two questions, and we touched on these last time, but, and I'll skip to the second one first. Does council want staff to make specific targeted effort to let District Two representatives know that there is a vacancy or just allow the process to occur?
Representatives in particular?
Correct. I'm open and responsive to any suggestions. It's, it's out of cycle is, is, I mean, I'm sure there's general awareness, but it's, it's what role would you want staff to play? Staff is typically not involved in elections, but is there effort you want us to make of any type to make sure people are aware? It's a quick turnaround for a filing, I think, is what has at least precipitated the question being asked.
Mayor Pro Tem, and then Councilmember Rao.
I think it's important that we state to all the town that we have four positions coming up. And we could do maybe a specialized effort for District Two, but it's important that people who live in District Two know there's an at-large position as well and that it, we just need to balance it a little bit. There are four positions. This is a major shift, but District Two is only two years and that there's messaging that needs to go out. It's like we typically have four-year terms. This is a two-year term. It's, you know, available for you to file, blah, blah, blah. I'd like to hear from the rest of the council, but I want the whole town to know that there's four positions open versus, you know, just targeting one district as a message.
Councilmember Rao, and then Councilmember Johnson, please.
And to let everyone know, all of the positions that are available, the four, but I do think that I would like us to communicate to those District Two residents that one of those positions is a District Two seat and it's for two years. Because I think that it's, you know, I think we should have every citizen and neighbor know in that district or, you know, that it's an open seat. Because they, they may not be following, we only, we, we see a lot of those residents come in to speak and stuff, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's everyone there. And I, I just think that we should let everyone in that community know that there's a seat open. The letter or, I think a letter would be good if possible.
Councilmember Johnson.
So normally I would say, you know, let's get the media involved and they're the ones that would help spread the word, but we don't have any, any media that follows us that closely and gets the word out to anybody. So I think it's important to, yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm going back and forth on this, quite frankly. I think it's important that the, the whole district knows for sure. Is our newsletter, is it too late to just put it in our newsletter or that, that timing's not going to work out?
And I don't think that it gets the attention. I mean, people put their newsletter aside for a week, two weeks before they read it. So just, just an add-on comment, the, the information about the three seats that are in the cycle has been out on the Wake County Board of Elections site. And that awareness might be there from a messaging standpoint. This one is, is going to be new to the game.
Off-cycle, yeah. I haven't reached the decision yet. I'm still, I'm going to mull it over five more minutes.
In the past, I believe the connection has had people after filing, or have we announced the fact that elections are coming up in the past in the connection newsletter? That filing was coming up or only that?
We have not done anything. And, and, you know, our connection newsletter is not on that monthly cycle that it used to be either as we've shifted those resources to some other things. So, I mean, it can be, but we haven't done anything yet.
I can understand that you wouldn't want that to be your primary means of communication, but we can certainly find space to include it. And the newsletter would drop about a month before. You know, that couldn't hurt. We could stick it in there. Wouldn't want to be your primary means.
Promote engagement. It's my recollection that there is the, at least a listing of the people who had filed. So that would be helpful. But in advance, when you guys are talking about alerting District Two, I was thinking, well, we want to alert everybody. But I do think that there may be a need for a little extra effort for District Two for people who are only paying attention sometimes like, oh, there's, in another couple of years, I was thinking about running, but now it's coming now. So I think that we definitely want to make sure everyone's aware to get more participation. But I think there should be a little bit more for District Two. I don't know if it's a separate mailing or some kind of attention to that area, in my opinion. Councilmember Schlink.
I was just going to say, I was in agreement of sending something and maybe something special to District special to District Two, three by five, Carter, something on top of that.
Ellis Gray, how effective is your emails? How many emails do you have?
We don't have email addresses.
So I guess general social media blasts, as you would do anyway about filing coming up and perhaps a little extra mailing to District Two.
Do, do we have your permission to make it happen?
Got two head nods, I'm not sure. To District Two, get a specific mailing.
Develop a plan. So, we'll, we'll obviously keep you posted, but, you know, I'm sort of popping this on Kathy too. She hadn't even seen my notes. To, to develop a quick communications plan, we can touch base with you. The District Two was the focus of my request because it's new and it's time urgent, whereas somebody that may be applying to run against an incumbent would long have known about that and be preparing for that. There's a very short window to prepare for this seat. Thank you. The other question on here is, and it's, it's really related to some of the work we've done tonight. And, you know, there are communities that try to prepare potential candidates for what local government is all about and what an elected official does. And I don't know that I want to call it an orientation. It is something that I'm suggesting staff could make happen if that was something that council wanted us to do. It would be really quick turnaround for a July filing. So it, I do know that there are those programs out there. In fact, in Morrisville's past, I think they've done this.
So we have done it. What we've, if my recollection is that it was after filing ended when it was all the And they were invited to come. It was actually pretty interesting. They were invited to come and they all sat up on the dais too. And then, and then, it was one evening.
That would certainly give us more time.
We never did it ahead of time. It was always, and I'm not advocating, you know, it was always after the fact. Now, some could argue you're doing the homework for the candidates.
And in my comment, I, I, I'm trying to be very clear. I'm not talking about giving people all kinds of information to use to develop their campaign platforms or forms. I'm talking about how a collective body works and some of the UNC school materials and council's role for policy administration versus what staff does. That's the, what I'm talking about. You know, majorities and quorums and, you know, closed sessions, the nuts and bolts, not tell me about this so I can advocate for or against it. That's the parameters I'm talking about.
Councilmember Schlink, is your thing up or no? Okay. Because I was thinking it might be nice to sort of provide just like the slideshow or whatever from Morrisville 101, just in general for people. I know that's a bunch of different sessions, but I would hope that anyone who's thinking about running, who hasn't been on a committee or come to a lot of our meetings, would at least have that much knowledge. So if that's available on the website, that people could just search on Morrisville 101 to get just a general info about the town. But that does sort of lead towards doing a little bit of their homework, but hopefully we want people who are at least somewhat informed as candidates. So I...
So if councils, and I really love your idea, is if it, if it's after filing would end, we would have time to again prepare something to bring back for your consideration rather than rush to implement this?
That's fine.
Okay.
Seeing no other business, I entertain a motion to adjourn, please. No motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously 6-0. It is 9:18. We are adjourned. Thank you all.